None this evening, thank you.
Commissioners' report? Correspondents?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Kim, would you please read the appeal statement?
I guess, within fourteen calendar days following the date of a decision by the planning commission, the decision may be appealed to the city council by the applicant or by any other interested party. If no appeal is made within that time, the decision shall be final. An appeal shall be addressed to the council in writing and shall be filed with the city clerk. Said appeals shall be accompanied by the appeal fee as specified by Resolution ninety-two, two-five-one, as adopted by the city council. Appeals shall state specifically the grounds for the appeal and the relief sought by the appellant.
Thank you. First item of new business is a item, it's called A and M Towing, and it's been continued to the September ninth meeting. Staff need to comment on that, or we're just...okay, thank you. Item number two is Downtown Auto Body.
Mr. Chair, I believe item number three has also been continued, is that correct?
Right.
And I think there's some folks that are in the audience that are here for that agenda item, so I wanted to let you know. And the date certain that that has been continued to is which date?
September twenty-third, second meeting in September.
Right, so September twenty-third. Thanks.
Jane?
Hi. The planning commission is being asked to review a request for an amendment to an existing conditional use permit that's held by Downtown Auto Body. The business is located on Pedaluma Boulevard South. The buildings around it are... Got a microphone, that doesn't work. You've got Hydraulics and Bearings and Hydraulics is located to the north, this is the business here. You have Foundry Wharf behind, the Diamond Head Condominiums are across the street, and there is another light industrial business to the south. What Downtown Auto Body is asking to do is to amend the use permit for three specific reasons. One is to allow, excuse me, fencing greater than eight feet but lesser than ten feet, which would be in the storage area to the rear. Actually, let me show you this. Pedaluma Boulevard is here, the building is here, and also here, with the spray booth inside. This current storage area is dislocation to the rear. Foundry Wharf, of course, is over here, and then parking along the side. There is an access gate to the rear. The existing conditional use permit does not allow that gate to be used. Everything must come in the front from Pedaluma Boulevard North. So the request is for fencing greater than eight feet but less than ten feet, for the towing operation, which is a part of the auto body painting and repair business, to be expanded to twenty-four hours and seven days a week, and for the ability for the business to store undamaged impounded vehicles. Right now, what the conditional use permit allows is an auto body repair and paint shop with a spray booth, which operates Monday through Saturday. The outdoor storage of new vehicles to be sold at a different site, and also the ability to tow in conjunction with the auto body business. The business currently has this use permit from nineteen ninety-six, and the hours of operation specifically were Monday through Friday from eight until five, and Saturday from eight AM to noon. The request is not to expand those auto body hours, just expand the towing hours to the seven hours, I'm sorry, seven days a week, twenty-four hours per day. The reason for requesting the ability to store undamaged impounded vehicles is that in order for this business to be put on the Pedaluma Police Department and the California Highway Patrol rotation list for tows, they have to be able to tow anything that they're called to tow, and at this point, that's not something that's part of their use permit. The other thing is they have to be available seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. We've received five letters that were a part of your packet that responded to the July notice, and they had some issues with the existing operations, with noise and traffic and some lights. And I've talked to the business owner, and he is here tonight, and we've reviewed what the problem is. I've visited the site, and we're confident that not only have the problems been solved, but also if the commission considers the twenty-four hours, seven days a week, some of the operating characteristics can be amended to take the neighbors into consideration. Again, the use permit does not allow access from the rear of the site. What staff is recommending is that if he is allowed to do the expanded tow hours, that he, for that too, exclusively be limited to entering by the front gate, and that the front gate have, be manually operated, and that any chains on it be rubber coated to reduce the noise. In addition to that, if they're towing at two, three in the morning, that they be restricted to the front ten spaces. So when the business, when the auto body repair business is closed, they'd have to come in the front, have to stash the cars here, then at eight o'clock in the morning, when normal business operations resume, move those cars back to the storage area. The conditions of approval that are in place for the nineteen ninety-six use permit, we recommend stay in place, and that what is added to it would be the hours of operation, the conditions of the front ten spaces, and the entry gate, in order to take into consideration the neighbors' concerns. Thank you.
Jane, the storage area that you have outlined there, is that supposed to be enclosed, or is that...
It has to be completely enclosed under the rules and regulations of our police department and also the CHP. It's required to be completely fenced, and required to have certain features to the gate and to the height and all of those things. At this point, the fencing, I believe, is not tall enough, hence the request that it be allowed to be taller than eight but no less than ten.
In the storage area?
In that area.
Okay, so it's going to be enclosed with a roof?
Oh, no, no, sir, sorry, just a fence, just the fence, with no top.
Okay. Because currently down there, after I went down and looked at it, there's a bunch of cars that are just being stored there right now that are in a shambles, basically.
Okay.
So I was curious to know if that was actually a storage area that was allowed in the original conditional use permit versus just the parking spaces that were along the side?
No, it's part of the original use permit, and it's the area, one of the areas, as well as the spaces along the side, that the business is allowed to store vehicles that are awaiting repair, vehicles that have been repaired and are waiting their owner to come get.
So they're only supposed to be in the parking spaces at this point?
They're allowed to be everywhere, actually. They're allowed to be all along and in the storage area.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just make sure I understand this. The only change that we're looking at in operating hours at all is for towing, is that correct?
Exclusively.
Exclusively, so we're not dealing with the expansion of repair or any other aspect of this facility? Also, I see on page five from the police department that the business hours will not be less than eight to five, and I take it is that because of towing that they must be open those days?
They must be open those days specifically, and in fact, in, for our police department, and it's my understanding that the CHP tow contract requires twenty-four hours from the officer that I spoke with.
Because the way I read it is that they close for Good Friday in the afternoon, they're out of business. I mean, I just wonder why we would be so specific here that you must be open every day, and is it strictly for the towing? If it's twenty-four hours, why do we have an eight to five restriction on that?
The police department conditions of approval were specifically for the towing, because that's the aspect of this use permit.
Then why isn't it on twenty-four hours, then?
They were giving parameters. They would like it to be twenty-four hours, but at minimum, at minimum, they want the eight to five, and if eight to five cannot be accommodated, then they would not be included in the tow contract.
Okay.
Chairman Thompson, there might need to be some clarification for holidays, though.
Yeah, that's definitely is being a tad strange.
And if the commission feels confident enough, we would be glad to clarify that through the police department.
Thank you. Any more questions, staff? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
I'm going to open a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak to this item may come forward, write your name down, address, and give us the same information, too, please.
Yes, my name's Joe Durney. I live directly...yes, okay. I live in a property that's directly...yeah, that's my...no, actually, that's the alley. Okay, we're getting closer here. A little bit more right there. And, thank you. I'm sorry that there's not more here. I spoke to some of the neighbors directly across in the seniors apartment, and, well, one of them had something to do, but for them, the majority of them are old folks and are afraid to come out at night, or it's difficult for them needing oxygen and things like that, but they're worried about this, and they're watching on TV, and they're going to be interested to see what's going to happen to their neighborhood. They're distressed that they'll be bothered by trucks beeping as they back up and lights at night, and as am I, I'm closer than anyone to this, and it's going to be quite intrusive. And also, I meant to bring my original notice. The notice that was sent out about this issue was sort of deceptive. It didn't mention that this was going to be twenty-four hours. It said that the only change was going to be that there would be trucks towed in there, and so I'm afraid that that might have stifled some of the opposition that you might have heard of this project. I meant to bring it, somehow I got off without my copy of the original notice, and, I'm sorry, I'm not very good at this, but I hope that this can be stopped. The applicant means well, I'm sure that you saw my letter, but he's had trouble keeping the original requirements of the original CUP. He's made some improvements since my letter, I gave him a copy of my letter when I did bring it to town here also, to the planning department, and he's made great improvements. I'm really pleased, but he still has had trouble meeting the requirements of the CUP. The gate is kept closed most of the day, but it's still open to tow cars in and out, and the lights are intrusive at night. These are things that I've grown to live with, and I hope that my being patient and not being the crabby neighbor and complaining about these doesn't come back to hit me now. The other problem is parking outside. He's also cut way back on that, but there's still a number of cars that are parked over by the river, and before I embarrass myself, I should ask Dionne if these are your cars that I see parked over on the river. There's a big van, I think I saw Gus drive that in the other day, and then there's a, well, there's a half dozen of them. I took a photograph of them to see if they're for you. I asked Royce Van Bever, and he didn't know about them. But parking is a problem down there. These cars don't interfere with parking. I worry about wrecked cars being parked. There's no pavement over there, and it is right next to the river, and these cars do look, and some of them look nice, but some of them are in pretty sorry shape. The lot is pretty well full. He's doing a wonderful business there. I notice at night generally the tow trucks, he's got some beautiful tow trucks, and they're parked out in the space generally at night in front of the fence, kind of on the sidewalk there, along there, because he's doing a great business. I have no idea where he's going to park these cars. His employees, not all of them, but some of them are parking in the Foundry Wharf parking lot and walking through the back gate. The garbage is still picked up through the Second Street gate, and I've noticed that, what is it, the Snap-on guy usually comes to make his tool deliveries and generally walks through the back gates with whatever parts he's delivering. And as it's difficult for him to meet the original CUP, I'm, you know, I don't think it's a good idea to expand it. I think it would probably be a good idea to ask him to tighten it up or even revoke this, the original CUP. When we came down here with the original applicant to open an auto body shop, it was very clear and very important that the hours would only be the daytime working hours because of us residents down there, and he assured us, and we assured, and we live with, you know, the auto body noise, you know that they're noisy, auto body shops, but we were satisfied that at least it wouldn't be going on at night. Now, I understand that rubber chains will help a lot, but there's no way you're going to get, have cars being towed in there at four in the morning, you know, when you're trying to get some sleep to get up at six and be able to live with that. Let me just check here to see if I got most of what I was going to speak about. That's basically it. Thank you. I hope you turn this down.
Anybody have a question for Mr. Durney?
I have one quick question. How often at night does this occur? Is it once a week, twice a week, every night?
They're not doing it now. They're asking to do it now. They occasionally work at night, and then you occasionally hear some, you know, people walking around in there at night, but the auto body work generally stops, stops toward the end of the working day. Sometimes they extend over, but we've learned to live with that.
Then I misunderstood you, Mr. Durney. I thought you said that you were woken, awakened at four in the morning.
I'm hoping that you won't let them...
I misunderstood that.
Won't let them do that.
I thought that some of the activity had already taken place. Thank you.
Finally, Mr. Chair. I heard you make reference to rubber chains, and I, what were you saying?
Well, that was, I saw it in the, the planners had thrown that in, I imagine, to...
Tell me where that is.
To help satisfy the...
The recommended condition to address the chains for the gates to be rubber coated so that there's reduced clanking.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And that's a wonderful idea, but, you know, that's really not going to help matters all that much when they're clanking, when...occasionally, they generally have left cars outside in the parking lot, they have left cars actually at night, now that I recall. I remember, I believe that they left one in the parking lot to the bearing supply because there was nobody there to open the gate, and then they were in there one time before Dionne took over, and I remember this driver, and it was like one in the morning or something, and he left his motor on, and finally, I got so annoyed with it, I shouted over and asked him, you know, to please turn on your car, and he was doing paperwork on the car that he was unhooking, and he turns around and looks at me, and then turns back and just continues his paperwork. This, you know, this isn't Dionne, it's just, you know, it's just sort of the annoyances you have to put up with, I suppose. Thank you for your time.
My name's Patricia Tuttle Brown, and I live at 513 Pedaluma Boulevard South. And the reason that I'm here is because we've attempted over these last, I don't know, ten years to have a neighborhood group of residents, the people that actually live in the Foundry Wharf downtown, or the Riverfront Warehouse area. And so, you know, we're all affected, because there's a certain number of residents there, and what happens in one part of the neighborhood affects everybody. So I just want to give you my view about this. My thought is that, excuse me, the letter from the primary, the primary letter, which was Joe Durney's letter, was somewhat misinterpreted in that he was listing a bunch of past crimes, you know, oh, they haven't done this, they haven't done this, they haven't done this, and I think, you know, in reading the letter, when I looked at the packet, you know, basically what he was saying was, okay, 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 we can live with this, but don't stick twenty-four hour, don't stuck a stick twenty-four hour service in here. And that's basically the point that I want to make. Number one, I don't think, I'm not, I could be wrong, Jane, but I think, I don't think the enclosed map about the zoning was completely right, because a couple of years ago, when we went back, some of the neighborhoods, neighbors got added into the Riverfront Warehouse area, so his parcel is actually part of the Riverfront Warehouse District, and, yeah, and it's not, it doesn't show that on the map here. And so there's actually two different zonings next to each other, because I don't think that the Pedaluma Auto, or the Downtown Auto Body is in, I think that may be the demarcation line, right? Van Bever's not included, is it? Well, those big fat lines are, well, anyway, the point is, my understanding about what we're trying to do in Riverfront Warehouse is that we're trying to have a mixed-use area. What's a mixed-use area? A mixed-use area is a place where people sleep as well as do business. And one of the things I was excited by in the Riverfront Warehouse zoning, when I was, you know, agitating to be part of it, because I live on the Boulevard, is that one of the causes that's in it somewhere, I don't remember, but is that, you know, when you do something, like, for instance, they are four-story buildings, right, in Riverfront Warehouse, that they're not allowed, some of the other places, but it has to be okay with the neighborhood. You can't just do one thing, one place, and one thing, and then something else completely different right next door. So this strikes me as, you know, okay, there's some problems with the existing business, there's smells sometimes, but don't stick twenty-four hour towing right next to a parcel with three residents on it. All you're going to do is eventually drive the residents out, if that's the intention. And I don't think that's the intention in this exciting mixed-use stuff that we're trying to do down there, you know? And my contention has always been, hey, the people that live there twenty-four hours a day, like Joe Akonnick, he has two names, is, you know, he's part of what keeps Dionne's cars safe. You know, if somebody goes messing around with Dionne's cars, there's going to be a person there all night long that can hear it, and that's one of the beauties of mixed-use, and that's why we have to appreciate the fact that there are people sleeping there, and they do, the business is good. That's a very, pretty safe neighborhood down there, the exception of some, you know, nighttime drinking. So specifically, I disagree with the findings two and three, you know, the proposed, you know, I think that this isn't just a throw for a commercial neighborhood. It's a Riverfront Warehouse neighborhood. That's that thing we're trying to do, that gem we're trying to create. And the proposed twenty-four, the number three is, therefore, the proposed twenty-four hour towing service as condition will not constitute a nuisance. I think that's wrong. If any of you slept next to twenty-four hour towing service, you'd be pretty angry, and, you know, we already have a big brouhaha that's been going on for about twenty years down there with Morgan Manufacturing, and they're next-door neighbors who like want to kill each other all the time, and that's slightly different, you guys are, you know, that's come up, right, over the years? Right, Pamela? I know. And, but that's a different situation, because Morgan Manufacturing's been there forever, and so have the neighbors. But this is different. This is something that you want to start, this twenty-four hour towing, and I don't think it's healthy for a mixed-use neighborhood. So it's a good test for you guys, you know? Are we going to sort of like push out the guys sleeping in mixed-use, or are we going to protect them? One other thing I wanted to say is that I noticed there were two agenda items together, and one of them got pushed, which was the other auto body shop, and I've already heard that those neighbors are agitating, and that's not even a twenty-four hour towing situation. Those are the same people that kept the homeless shelter out, the same neighbors, you know? And they're already agitating against that. I don't know why it wasn't on for the night, I don't know, maybe they've succeeded or something, but, you know, like, our little neighborhood over there, or where we are, you know, I mean, we've got a lot going on in that neighborhood. We've got, you know, as far as, they were succeeding, successful in the homeless thing, we've, you know, I'd like to see our neighborhood get a little, have a little respect. So, I think you ought to protect our neighborhood with its glowing diversity, and that includes Mr. Durney's parcel with its three cute little cottages. Thank you.
Hello, my name's James Wyland, Jr., and we live in the parcel right across the street here, this long one, next to Diamond Head Condominiums, and my family's owned that property for five generations. My great-great-grandfather built the house, and we, as a child, I even remember empty lots everywhere around there. And so we've seen the neighborhood change from a residential area to this mixed-use area with mixed feelings, and, but we've dealt with it, and we've dealt with it, I think, pretty well, with the exception of the last tenant prior to myself moving in, who was the only tenant in our house who has never been family, who was not a family member. We're trying to do what we can to take our family's lot and add it to the whole scene of the Boulevard and make it a part that's actually a positive thing to look at, and it's an old house, and it's always been kind of crusty-looking, and, you know, we want to try to be a part of the whole uplifting of Pedaluma's Riverfront area, and the adding of the business in the area, I think, is a good positive thing, but twenty-four hour business, just on my own personal beliefs, is pushing it a little far. There's only just myself and my wife living in that one house, but next door to us at Diamond Head, there are quite a few senior citizens, and I think the beeping of backup, the backup sound of tow trucks as they back into the lot, because it's pretty much the only way that they can get in there, or just the sounds of their diesel engines and the lights and everything else, I think, push the limits of mixed-use residential, commercial way beyond what's right, and I'm just speaking for myself and my wife, but I'm kind of also speaking for the senior citizens next door, because, like, sorry, yeah, like she was saying, we kind of all look out for each other down there, and when I hear noises next door at Diamond Head, I react. When we hear noises next door, my dogs react to it, and it's, we consider it, that's a residential section just right across the street there, and we're kind of protective of our little area, and I know my dogs are going to bark twenty-four hours if there's tow trucks pulling in twenty-four hours, and I'll do what I can to control that, because that's not right for the other people to hear my dogs barking, but, like I say, I just, I think this is going beyond the limits of what is a good mixed-use residential, commercial thing, and as it is, they do occasionally push their hours beyond eight to five, and there's nothing wrong with that. I work overtime sometimes, too. But I'm a college student as well, and I need to sleep at night, and I think that most senior citizens next door will agree with me that they would like to sleep at night as well. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dionne Reeve, who you've heard a little bit about, apparently, owner and manager of Downtown Auto Body. I guess I've got quite a bit to address out of something I thought was going to be a kind of a minor thing. What we're essentially looking... What we're essentially looking to do is just expand by this twenty-four hour. I'd like to address a couple of things because certainly, I, we don't want to pall any neighbors and we've worked very hard to, to fit in and have a clean-looking shop in a very good organization and be as quiet as possible. One of the things with twenty-four hour, what we're looking to do is only be able to come in there when we have a vehicle that's been addressed by the police department or an emergency tow. We will not be staffing it twenty-four hours, we will not have an employee there twenty-four hours, which will address the question you had about the police department of an eight to five office hour. That is an office hour that we must maintain. That's in case somebody wants to come and get their car. But we do have to be able to drop off cars twenty-four hours a day. This is something that happens about once every two and a half to three weeks that you'll get a car in the middle of the night. It is not something we plan on doing nightly. My driver, Jim, who's here obviously enjoys his sleep, he also works an eight-hour day for me during the day, so he's not looking to be up twenty-four hours a day just driving cars in and out. We've worked very hard, like I said, I think our building is very presentable in the neighborhood. I'm born and raised in Petaluma, I'm a fifth generation as well, and certainly that's why I chose to put my business in Petaluma, is I spend all of my money in Petaluma. The trucks that we purchased, we want to be a part of this program, be a part of Petaluma's great new stop program, the DUI program that they have. We will be the fifth tow company now on the list, which means that we will only get every fifth call. And as you can imagine, that is about every two and a half days that we even get a call. The odds of that at night are obviously slim except for on the weekends. When we do that, one of the things that we will do is when we pick up the car, if there's not the necessity, what we do is take our time and then get it in there as soon as possible. But we usually have been unloading right in front of my front gate. One of the things you'll notice from the diagrams is that we are not associated or next to anybody's yard. If you look to the left, if you're facing our building, if you look to the left, there's actually a street between my yard and Joe Dirney's house that is open twenty-four hours a day for the public to use. That is, so we're not butting quite up against anybody's property. If you take a look to the right where our storage yard is, that is the whole yard of Van Bever Brothers, which obviously at night, there's nobody around over in that area. If you look, obviously, at Diamondhead, that is across a four-lane highway, which for us to unload a vehicle, yes, it's gonna make noise, we're gonna make as little as possible, but it is gonna make some noise. But it's not gonna be any louder than an eighteen-wheeler leaving town to go pick up hay at three o'clock in the morning like they do every day. We're gonna try and certainly keep it down. We have unloaded in the front of our gate, we then open the gate and then we drive the car in. We have been operating for over two years, obviously, very successfully and Joe, thanks for noticing. And we've been giving back to Petaluma every way that we can. In that time, we've been towing in at night wrecked cars. That is part of our use permit. What we're looking to do is tow unrekt cars. What that means is it'll be quieter because we're not scraping metal and what we're doing at this point is have a car that we can turn the key and drive in through the gate as opposed to drive the truck in and have to find a way to unload this car that may not be drivable, obviously. So, there's, there's a couple of things that really aren't gonna change and that we have been doing for a couple of years and to my knowledge, we haven't had a problem waking up any neighbors, anything for that two-year period. There's a couple of things that I did want to address. We certainly want to comply and as Joe said, we've done everything within our power to make it a beautiful building and as quiet as possible. Unfortunately, we're trying to make a living. We have upwards of nineteen employees, so certainly, everybody is compliant. We try to park where we're not in the way. We try to make sure the building always looks good. Unfortunately, these shamble vehicles that were addressed, those are cars that have been in an accident. There's just not a lot we can do. We do not store cars there past forty-five days. If it's something that is not a repair, there's a lien placed on it, the car's out of there in thirty days and we give it or donate it. So, we do not store those, we are not a junkyard and you'll notice in the CUP that we've addressed not to be a wrecking yard. That is not what we want to do. Unfortunately, we'd just like to store the cars we're working on and get those in and out for as many people, mainly Petalumans, as possible. The back gate has been opened at times and I was not really aware, I saw the CUP, but also there's a paid right-of-way by the owner of my property to use that. And the only reason we really use it was addressed by Joe is for the garbage truck. They feel it unsafe to back their truck out onto the boulevard once a week. So, we have opened those gates so they can load the garbage and then drive out. They do come in that, the back way anyways to empty Van Bever's and Foundry Wharf, which is right in front of Joe's house. Unfortunately, their garbage can is right there. So, that we do use, obviously, at that point. Let me just see if there's a couple of other things here. Obviously, in that area, we do have some mixed businesses, the sheet metal business. Unfortunately, we even have a bar down the street that's open till two o'clock that they're parking in front of the streets. So, we've got some noise that are going on, obviously. Our intent at this point, what we've been doing, is to the right of our building is an empty lot that the Van Bever Brothers use during the day. What we do is we pull our truck in there, we unload right in that parking lot and then drive around the front of the building into the gates to try and minimize the noise as much as possible for all of our neighbors, obviously. We've gone out of our way as much as possible to be a part of the community. Again, like I said, I'm born and raised and many of my employees work in town. We've given back to the community, which may or may not be relevant, but certainly, I believe in Petaluma, not here to harm any neighbors or anybody. But I think that we had to make a tremendous investment, unfortunately, in the tune of almost two-hundred thousand dollars in our tow trucks and it is required by the contract to be on the police rotation to be able to do these night hours. Again, it's not something that I enjoy as, two weeks ago, we were at the checkpoint till three in the morning, doing whatever it takes, obviously, to be part of the police rotation and certainly, again, Jim likes his sleep. We do give back, like I said, we're a major player in the DARE program as much as donating to the DARE car here in town. We donate to both the Little Leagues. We even offer, we've done work for, for some of the seniors over at Diamondhead. We do a lot of work for the cars here in town and we're not looking to offend anybody. Again, I just can't reiterate enough that there's not gonna be a big change that hasn't happened in the last two-plus years at this point and you're looking at a very rare occurrence where we need to bring these in. And again, what we're addressing with this amended use permit is unrekt cars. We already have the right to bring in wrecked ones. There was just a gray area, I guess, that I didn't pay attention to, assuming that an unrekt car would be not, without a problem. And that's why we really want to make sure that everything's in black and white. What we're looking to address by using those front stalls, obviously, and rubber-coated chains, I can't think of any other way to be as polite and courteous to our neighbors as we can unless we can almost coast up to the gate, I guess, without an engine running. But we've gone as far as to offer to obviously turn off the engine and use only what's necessary during the time we're unloading and do whatever we can, obviously, to work with all of our neighbors. Again, let me just take a look, make sure I've addressed everything. A couple of the letters that I did write, that I did read apparently, that were turned in, they seem not really to understand that process as far as the added commotion or any sirens, I think one noted, or additional lights being added. None of that will be necessary. Again, it's really a, a minor change that we're looking for. Again, the one thing I can stress is if you take a look at all the drawings, it really were not up against anybody as far as properties. There is a thorough way on the left side of the shop where Joe's home is and there's certainly the four-lane highway out front. And I certainly thank you neighbors for understanding what we're trying to do and again, certainly we'll work with anybody any way that we can.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may. You said earlier that prior to this time, you, you have been accepting vehicles at night, you've been towing the wrecked vehicles and you've been depositing them in front of your facility and then putting them in the next day? Is that...
What they do is they're actually unloading in front of the gate and opening the gate and putting them in the first stall, so in the front of the facility. But we actually unload them in front of our gates, there's actually, unfortunately, a lot of people go down the street and do a U-turn in front of our property. The sidewalk is really wide and there's parking spot, there's one in front. So, we'll actually unload in front of that, open the gate and then pull it in. And that's the way we've done that and that's just to be courteous right out of the gate and that's how we plan on continuing to do it.
Okay, and this is, this is nighttime?
This is nighttime, if there's an emergency call only. If someone like yourself gets in an accident at two or three in the morning and you request us to the police department, we have the obligation to our customers that we guarantee a twenty-five minute response time anywhere in the city, that we will be there to help you and/or your family at that point to take care of your car.
And is that permissible under the current conditional use permit?
Are you asking me, is that correct?
I'm asking staff, actually. Well, anyway, while somebody's getting that information, question number two, you said that your policy with regards to if you got this, this twenty-four hours, your policy would be to go to the parking lot that's in the rear of your facility and unload there and then drive them around to the front and then...
No, it'd be to the right of the facility, so there would actually be between, my building would then quiet the echo to Joe's property, which is kitty corner, and the only thing to the right of us would be the big empty Van Bever lot, so it would be very isolated. At that point, we can unload and then just drive them around the front, making no more noise than any other cars going by.
Okay.
If we need to do that, we're more than willing to do it.
Okay, the other, the other question, this is just a, I'm not familiar with the lot, so this back gate that is creating such concern, for example, with Joe, would it be possible to unload in, in that lot beside and then drive in the back? Is that gonna create more disruption, for example, for Joe, but less disruption for the elderly in the, in the facility that's across the street? Or is it something that could, you know, actually accommodate all of the neighbors in a, in a better way? I'm curious about that aspect of it and looking at that.
Okay, the, the gate in the back, I think, would be more disruptive because it's closer to Joe's home and out of courteous, courtesy. I don't believe that would be the way to do it. Again, by doing it, what we're looking to do, we're, we're isolating ourselves between a vacant building at night, which is Van Bever's, our building, which is vacant at night.
Do you want to show that on, the best you can on this, is where are you gonna be dropping the car off?
Okay, here would be our building, the front area of our building here. So, essentially, we could unload on this side of the building and the only thing around us would be Van Bever's all in this area, which is off here.
Right.
Like this. We would unload in this territory here, which would be cornered by a full empty lot and a full empty building over here up to the roadway. So, at that point, once we unloaded, we would just drive on the street like any other car going by. So, it would not be disruptive to Diamondhead if we needed to.
Is that the way the conditions are stated right now?
No.
No, that's what I'm saying, I can do.
You're suggesting that, okay.
If we need to, we can park in the front of the building. If you look here in the front area, this is where we have parking already. So, we pull up off the street, park here, we can unload and then go through this gate and park in these stalls, which are, this is all hydraulic and bearing, so there's nobody leaving there during that time. This is all their parking lot all along here. So, and then again, Joe's home would be clear over back in this area.
Okay, the, I know that one of the concerns that was voiced by the neighbors had to do with the noise incurred with regards, and the disruption with regards to the flashing lights and the, the klaxon sounding when you back the truck up. Is that something that can actually be turned off and not utilized if you're making a late-night delivery?
Certainly, there'd be no need for the lights because we're off the street. The only time we use the lights is at an accident scene or if we're disrupting traffic. So, the lights, as far as flashing lights and all that, those are not used when we unload the vehicle.
Okay.
And then obviously headlights can be turned off once we're pulled off the street if the backing up noise is required. Only one out of the three trucks has a backup buzzer and then certainly that can be disconnected.
Does staff know whether that's a requirement, any kind of a legal requirement?
I believe it's maybe an OSHA standard, but I don't, I don't know whether it's by law required on, on a commercial towing vehicle. We can check into it, but I would like to answer the questions that one of the commissioners, Torriot, asked. The existing conditional use permit requires the limitation of hours to be Monday through Friday, eight to five, and Saturdays, eight to noon. There is no stipulation to after-hours towing in.
So, what they have been doing for two years with regards to dropping off wrecked vehicles in front has essentially been in violation of the existing CUP?
That's correct.
Okay. The other question that I have for you, Dean, is Dion, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Jim.
You didn't, I, I don't see the Super Bowl rings, but anyway, the...
Tow trucks.
The, the amount of time that, you said that you expect to receive something since you would be the fifth, the fifth towing company in rotation. You said that would equate to one vehicle every some odd days, two and a half days?
Approximately two to two and a half days during the week and then it might be more if they're doing a special checkpoint or stop program on a weekend.
Okay, what would be your expectation on a weekend?
I can tell you that it averages probably, right now, two to three at the most from Friday to, to Monday.
Two to three at the most for all five companies that are involved or two to...
No, for, per company...
Fifteen cars end up being towed after hours on Friday and Saturday night?
Yeah, if you're including Friday, if you take Friday out, it's about two vehicles per tow company. One per day. On the weekends, it speeds up.
Thank you.
One quick clarification on this, so one per day, but that could be during the day or at night?
Could be anytime.
Oh, so, so you're saying that two or, or three per day, not, I thought your question was at night?
No, what, what he was saying is his expecta, if I'm correct in this, his expectation is that with regards to the night use, it will involve one vehicle every two to three days, correct?
Yeah, which could be anytime, not at night use, I'm sorry. No, not at night. Oh, I'm sorry.
Any time in that twenty-four hours, you'll get a...
That's correct, okay. Right, which actually, on an average, on an average is about, we took a look at it as far as toes that we have, is approximately seven toes in five and a half months would be night toes. So, it's actually very rare.
Just, do you have to pay?
Dion, do you have to pay a fee to be on the city's list or do you have to do anything wonderful and special to, to be on there?
It certainly looked like there wasn't gonna be a fee. When I first applied under the original contract, all you needed was a tow truck. Somehow, a new contract came out after I applied, three weeks later, which went from four pages to fifty-two pages and I had to then purchase three tow trucks. So, I am now vested over a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, which my original contact, the police department, was if I had one truck, I would be vested. It looked like an original forty-eight thousand dollar investment. So, there's not an actual fee, but it was a four-and-a-half-month process because of this transition and I fell under a new agreement that still was not somehow authorized by the city manager, but I was expected to buy three trucks to get on, which I did because I was already committed with the one. So, that was my fee, if you will, and then I was allowed to do that after four and a half months of inspecting property and making sure that I had the trucks and they inspected the trucks to make sure that they had all the proper equipment and each truck was safe. And obviously, I've invested in the newest and most state-of-the-art equipment.
And there was an issue brought up about cars along the river. Do you know anything about that or are you parking any of your cars in the Van Bever prop, Van Bever...
Along the river in that area, Rick Van Bever was nice enough that I did some work for him that he said that it, my employees could park back there in his property. I don't know if I'd call it right along the river because there's all the canoes and all the boats and all that between us and them, but there is a designated area that if we need to for employees is what it was designed for, to park back in there so we didn't tie up any wharf as my business was expanding, obviously. And in that, we had some cars back in there. If you look back there, most of those cars are all drivable and owned by either myself and/or employees.
Okay, so, you do have some cars back there?
Yeah, it's a gravelled area that he has next to his building where his employees park.
Okay, so you probably have...
I believe there's two there right now.
There's two of ours.
I was at today, I think.
Okay, and you were the original applicant for the, for the original CUP?
For Downtown Autobody?
Yeah.
Correct, the original applicant was my partner, Victor Gennella.
Okay, and so he's still currently your partner?
No, Victor Gennella has been dismissed as of October of last year.
Okay, so, were you involved with the original conditional use permit when it was applied for and was it, did Victor do...
Victor handled most of that, so I wasn't involved. And then when the business opens, when I got a hundred percent involved, I had to work for him at that time, so he was handling most of the opening of the business.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask that is because I know a couple of us commissioners were here at the time when Downtown Autobody was put in and I know that there was a major concern by the neighbors about extended hours of use. And so, it's unfortunate that you may have not been privy to that and to those long discussions or that long discussion when we originally approved the conditional use So, I, I don't know how the commission is going to look at this, but I'm thinking about the potential of a six-month allowance of you to, to go ahead and do this and then have it come back for review of the commission if the commission is gonna look at that. And I don't know if that's something that could be worked out because we all are trying to be neighborly. So, I'm, I'm throwing that out there as a potential thought on this.
Scott?
Make sure I understand this, the only thing we're dealing with here is that you want to tow undamaged, impounded vehicles at night every... Now, going back to the undamaged vehicles, you said you can pull them up to the gate, turn on the key, drive them in. Is there any reason you can't pull them up a block away in front of a warehouse with no houses around and do this and drive them a block and drive them in?
That's exactly what I'm, what I was saying I could do between the Van Bever building and ours, that is all vacant in that area and it's off the street, and it would be very safe and quiet in that area.
So if it turns out that Van Bever is too close to something else, is there a restriction about how far you could drive these vehicles? Is this my question?
I don't believe there's a restriction. Certainly, we don't want to be seen driving around town in somebody else's car, but I think that within reason, if there's some way we can do it, that just seems to be the closest empty lot, and I think that unloading there is going to be a lot quieter than any other vehicle driving right in front of Diamond Head.
And the other thing, just a comment I want to make, I guess not a question, since this is an issue, the fact that you've been towing at night beyond the CUP, I do notice that this is acknowledged in the staff report, and I don't know if, I assumed when I read this, that drivers will accept an after-hours tow request on an emergency basis only, that this was not necessarily in violation since this wasn't pointed out. And Jane, is there, you want to comment on that?
I had a conversation this afternoon with Ken Savano, who runs our stop program, and he says that every once in a while, they're just plain stuck, and they must call a tow truck driver, which means there is the potential for everybody to be in violation, I think. So on an emergency basis, the police department will call and do what they need to do.
Those are the only after-hour toes that you're currently making, then? I guess that's my question.
No, I have to be honest with you because I wasn't privy to that. To my knowledge, there's probably been five throughout the year that were accidents that were either customer request, and then they asked the police department. So it wouldn't be directly by the police department, but yes, if we get that call, we would open it, put it in the gate, but certainly, you know, weren't conducting any other business.
You said about five in the last six, eight months?
There's probably been five, I would say, almost in the last year, to be honest with you, as far as accidents related.
Any more questions, the applicant? Thanks. Thank you, Mr., would you like to continue?
Any other, the only other comment I can say is that certainly, that the landlord prior to me, or the tenant prior to me, was Veterans Autobody, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, which was twenty-four hours, which also was on our police rotation prior to us, and that's what made that building attractive when it came available to us, is it is a natural for what we're looking for. So they were on the police rotation as well. They were not on CHP, but they were on Petaluma Police, and they were also the full body shop as we are as well. And they had a CUP that was in place.
Mr. Chair, do you know how long this business was established prior to yours, the one you're speaking of?
The building, they were out of the building, I believe, for about approximately four months out of business before we were, and I believe that's in the staff report as well.
No, I mean how long they were in business at that location. Do you have any idea?
I believe it was three years, three years, I'm...
Okay, and the other question has to do, again, with the towing of wrecked vehicles. Right now, you've been towing wrecked vehicles that have been a request either from the client, routed through the police department to you, and you say that that's happened maybe five times in the last year. If you get this twenty-four-hour towing, are the police going to be coming to you entirely separate from the circumstances that you've been dealing with up to this time for more wrecked vehicles to be towed into that location?
The customers...
So what percentage?
Okay, the customer request will remain the same, the same, you know, customers will still request us. The only difference would be, as we talked about this, every two and a half days or every on the weekend, possibility of one a day, which could be anytime during that day, as any of the other tow companies in town.
I'm speaking just of wrecked vehicles, not the ones that you've spoken of with regards to being able to drive them in because they've...
You probably get, I would say, I'd like to get more than, but you're probably going to get maybe one a month, maybe two a month that are wrecked because of DUI, or where they arrested the gentleman and then were called to the scene. But we will still be in an equal rotation, so there's not a whole lot of those. With this new stop program, they're preventing, obviously, any accidents and doing a good job of that, where they get them before there's an accident.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had a question for Pamela or Jane. Wasn't there an original conditional use permit that came before the planning commission for Veterans Autobody for their use? And that's not included in the staff report?
Veterans Autobody was done in 1993, and they operated until 1996.
And so, but I believe at that point in time, there was a hearing that we had at the planning commission on their use, and so subsequent to that, the planning director, you, I guess, signed the letter with Victor for Downtown Autobody without the planning commission reviewing the use. Is that correct?
Yes, under the zoning ordinance, if a use permit is to reestablish a previous use that was granted under a use permit, I have the ability to do it as a minor use permit. So we stipulated to the same condition.
So maybe that's why Victor was not privy to a lot of the public input that occurred when we did...
In 1993.
In 1993, when we went through the process with the neighborhood. Okay.
I certainly wouldn't do it on purpose, let me tell you.
No, and I wasn't saying that. I was trying to get clear what actually occurred.
However, the conditions didn't change. We did not modify the 1993 conditions, but you're right, the actual testimony was not heard by the operator, the second operator.
Thank you, Dion.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this subject?